All right, I'd like to call this meeting of Delanco Township School Board Meeting to order. Start off with a moment of silence. Thank you, and we'll do a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Calabar?
Here.
Mr. Arno?
Here.
Ms. Gonteski?
Here.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Phil Jenkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cameron Egan?
Here.
Mr. Litback?
Here.
Mr. War.
Here.
Ms. Whitney?
Here.
Okay, we have the reading of statement out of the notice, please.
Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act of the United States of America. Posting on school board to boards on 10/5/20. Advertising in the Burlington County Times and the Imperial Post on January 30th. Sending a notice to the Burlington County Times and Imperial Post on October 2nd, 2020. The following written notice with the curve of Delanco Township and October 2nd, 2020.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes of September 9th, 2020, regular and executive session meetings, please.
A motion?
Motion by Marissa.
Second.
Second by Rose. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Vera, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
All right, and Harry?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. I've gone over the reports of the Secretary and Treasurer for August 2020, which are your agreement. I make a motion for it.
I'll second.
Second by Marissa. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Vote again? No. But did you get my vote?
I couldn't hear what you said. Can you hear me, please?
I said no. Again.
For the whole, okay.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Please on report. Do we have anything from Riverside High School, Rose?
That's actually where this meeting is.
All right, not a problem. Uh, Delanco PTO, we do have an update from Wendy Flanagan. Yes, sir. We're here. So, uh, for... All right, thank you, Bill.
Uh, for the public and for the board, uh, this is from Wendy Flanagan. These are her words. She says, "Thank you to everyone who ordered from our online book fair. We sold about $246 worth of books. It wasn't anywhere near what we usually sell in person, but considering the situation we are in, this is a good turnout. Books can still be ordered even though our fair has ended and we will earn 2% back for our school." Mrs. Flanagan also said, "We are working on setting up the Chick-fil-A night. That will have a drive-through or pickup only." Um, and also, uh, the next PTO meeting is Tuesday, October 20th, and the link will be sent close to the 20th. And, uh, that's the report from Wendy Flanagan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mercer here. Okay. DICE Recreation and Township Committee, Mike, you have anything for us, sir?
Uh, the only thing I note that the Delanco County Health and Parks Conference called their reporting would be daily COVID positive counts are double and triple what they were during the summer time load. So, uh, the county COVID testing is now RCDC. That's on the county website, also on the township's website. You can also get a home self-test kit. According to a couple of people on the conference call today that already did it, uh, Chris Holland, one of our committee members, did it over the weekend. It's quick, it's easy. Uh, all that information is also on the township website and also on the county health and public website. So, uh, there's a lot of opportunities, the mobile sites that the county is going to have. They're going to move that around the county primarily at long-term care facilities. And actually at some schools that are becoming hotspots. So, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's good for the public and the county and health and public website as well. So, that's kind of the newsflash and kind of...
All right, I believe also this weekend's hampshire yard cleanup?
Yes, uh, if there's any junk around in your yard, Phil, uh, I think you can take it with a caution.
I have a lot of junk in my yard. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, welcome visitors. You know, I really don't have anything much to say tonight for once. I've got a microphone. I really don't need it. Everybody can hear me. Uh, student recognition, we have nothing. Uh, public comment on agenda items. We did have some people send in here, and we'll start with the first one here, which was from Catherine Plum. How will the fully virtual option will be set up for the second marking period? Will the students who remain fully virtual continue to receive the same amount of instruction and interaction from the teachers? Will their day be similar to the format that they have settled into with the science, Zooms, et cetera, during the morning hours? What steps are in place to make a smooth transition from those who will continue to stay virtual if the same daily schedule is not the same? Uh, I believe Mr. Conti is, uh, Lou, I think you're sitting at the back. I believe you're addressing some of these issues.
Yeah, I actually spoke with her today. Actually, I can't read because I have a lot of numbers in it. So, do we select them virtual, do we select them hybrid?
All right, Charlie, would you want to add on that also?
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and thank you, Mrs. Plum, for the questions. Uh, just, just so everyone's aware, uh, we did receive these questions via email as well. Mr. Conti's been working on addressing the, the questions with Mrs. Plum. However, she's not the only one that has these questions, I'm sure. So, just so everyone's aware, uh, if you couldn't hear Mr. Conti in the back, uh, what he was saying was that we're collecting all the information from parents by the end of this week. And so, once we have that information, it's going to be up to Mrs. Noble, Mr. Conti, and myself. We're going to be looking at cohorts. We're going to be looking at schedules. And the goal is to get information out to families within the next week and a half so that they have sufficient time. Now, um, I was saying that to our board members that, you know, I'm proud of that. We haven't done it yet, but I'm proud of that timeline at least because I, I see what some other districts are doing and they are providing information sometimes, uh, with, with only two days' notice. And we want to be able to provide sufficient notice to the families of what the schedules actually will look like. Now, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, but that's our goal, is to get the schedules out. Um, we're looking at getting them out by the end of next week. So that would be, um, Friday the 23rd. Again, it's a goal. That's not a promise, but that's something that we're working on as of next week.
Mr. Mercer? Okay, is there anybody else in the public that has any comment on agenda items? All right, I can close out the public comment agenda items. Superintendents report. Mr. Mercer, do you need the mic again?
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Uh, motion is requested to approve the following items, uh, letters A through G. And I'll provide comments as necessary after the motion and the second. Thank you.
Aye, Cameron, we make the motion.
I'll second.
Marissa, second. Questions or comments?
I have a question, Vera Arno.
Go ahead, Vera.
Uh, it's from letter G, page 11, use of facility. Non-district organization cannot use, cannot, uh, use school, be on school property. Um, what is the reasoning behind that?
Uh, I'm sorry, Vera. What letter is this?
It's under, it's under, it's under the reopening plan. She's not meant to be opening.
Right, the re, okay, the reopening plan. Go ahead.
She's asking about how.
So, I know that a non-district organization, um, cannot be coming into the school. Uh, what is the reasoning behind that?
Hang in the mic for a minute. Um, that was part of our original plan. It's been part of the plan since the very start to not allow any outside organizations to utilize the school buildings for the time being. That does not mean that our plan wouldn't incorporate that at a later time. So, during the current, in coordination.
No, I mean, just for the time being, what is the reason behind not letting them use it for the time being?
The reasoning is to prevent the spread of COVID-19. That's, that's the only reason I could offer at this time.
Okay, so, we're, you're holding the meeting inside, um, a school room with members of the public that also could promote the spread of COVID-19?
That's, that's not the same.
That's the reason why, that's the reason why I'm, um, I'm linking electronically.
This is district events, so.
I would like all our meetings to be virtual for the same reason that you are not permitting non-district organizations to do it.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's your question and comment. That's something for the president or vice president to consider. But as it stands, we have in-person board meetings. They are district events. Uh, educating children is something that would be happening in the district as of the member for the in-person aspect of the hybrid. So, uh, but that, that doesn't mean that we would be allowing any event from any outside organization. So, our, our plan has various phases that we're going through. So, the phase that, that begins from marking period two in November, we'll have in-person instruction for students. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we're going to be allowing outside organizations just yet. So, that's, that's the only explanation I can provide at this time.
I just, I'm just, we need to, we need to have actual meeting for the school board and then start in-person meetings when the kids come into hybrid. That's my comment. My other comment is, um, uh, COVID-19 is an airborne, airborne disease. Spread through the air. In my district, we started in-person retreats. And I have seen students. And we have air purifiers in every single classroom in my district. I'm wondering why does the open committee do not consider buying air purifiers for every classroom?
It just wasn't discussed. We, we, it wasn't discussed. It wasn't considered. It doesn't mean it wouldn't be considered in the future, but in fact, this is, this is, um, uh, the topic of air purifiers for each classroom was not discussed and was not considered during the reopening committee. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be considered during a future meeting. Uh, but for the time being, the plan does not incorporate that.
Would it not be considered because the disease was not considered airborne by the open committee?
I'm sorry, Vera. We didn't hear you. Could you repeat that again, please?
I'm, I'm asking why, um, blue air purifiers aren't considered? Because, you know, we know that this, um, coronavirus is an airborne disease. And we know that these MIRF-13 filters, which are really needed to do, to purify the air, they're on back order. They haven't arrived. Air purifiers would have been a quicker solution or at least it would have mitigated the problem faster. I think this, which is looking on the, I don't think we should keep those MIRF-13 filters, have we?
Shall we?
Have we received the MIRF-13, uh, air filters or not?
The MIRF-13 filters have been ordered and they're going to be installed according to our director of facilities. They will be installed before the end of the month. Um, they've been ordered. Uh, we are expecting that order before the end of the month. But as for air, air purifiers.
Are you saying that's to let people feel better?
Okay, I mean, I, I.
Is this an only comment?
I, I, I just want, I just want, for the sake of the public and the board, that we, we. Harry, I just want to respond to Vera, that we thoroughly addressed the topic of any airborne particles, droplets.
I understand what you said. I have, uh, my question is a matter of first point about the reopening plan. I thought you, I thought I heard you say that it would be up to the president and vice president to decide if we, you know, both coming in?
No, uh, what I, what I had said was that it would be up to the president or vice president to determine the nature of the board meeting, whether it is the in-person or virtual board meeting. That's, that's been the case.
Why is that the discretion of the entire board?
Then I'm going to turn the mic over to our president now as the presiding officer over this meeting so he can respond to your question, Mr. Litback.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, go ahead, Harry.
The question I have is, that could be an entire, that could be the board's decision, an entire board decision, whether it be going virtually or, or not virtually for a meeting, not just the president and vice president.
Well, that's the way our, certainly, we are set up right here, Harry, and we also offer the option to do it virtually, which you did.
But we're set up that way entirely. Why? It could be a board decision.
Well, that's the way we've set up our personnel and policy meetings. And I believe you are chairman of the policy. And if you wish to change something, you could bring it up at your meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah, we were, we were speaking on the agenda and its new business, but that's not the issue. The issue was where, where was established that the president and vice president would be speaking for the other seven people on the board about what their concerns or input was or voted on?
That is the way we've set up as we do business as a board, Harry. You know, those are, you know, the, the rules and the regulations that we have as a board. If you would like to change it, sir, you know, the Policy and Personnel Committee, which you are chair of, you can bring it up.
There's a lot of standard operating procedures that because of COVID, we've opted to set aside and to put aside because it would be necessary. And to selectively decide which things are and which things aren't is an inconsistency that can be the problem. So, I'm sitting here and I'm listening to, I, I, I don't have my stuff. I can't see it. But I, I heard you, is that Mike Templeton who was talking? It sounded like he was shouting from the back of the room. It's an airborne disease. For God's sake, folks. And what I have to say about it, you can keep saying it's the policy, but if the policy is someone that, um, a person makes the policy and people follow it because it's a global alternative, there's no consequences to the policy.
I'm sorry, Harry. We're really having a hard time understanding you, sir. You know.
You're making a decision for the entire board, Bill. That's what I'm saying in plain words.
In plain words, Harry, the board makes a decision as a whole. That's how we do it.
No, we don't make a decision as a whole. We didn't make a decision as a whole.
Do you have any other comments on the reopening plan, Harry?
What's that?
Do you have any more comments on the reopening plan?
Well, in the reopening plan, is that what it says? That the president and the, uh, vice president, because that seems to have superseded whatever the standard operating procedures and regulations and rules and policies we have before. Is that what it says in there, too?
So, so, Harry, Harry.
But it gives you and Marissa, or the decisions of president and vice president, you authority.
Harry, just so that you're aware, this process, uh, that we went through for this meeting is similar to the one we went through for the last meeting. Is that we confer with the board solicitor. Vicki and I talk to each other and to the president and the vice president about the nature of the meeting. Now, if you said that you wanted the full board to determine the nature of the meeting, would that be a vote? Because if it's a vote, then that requires a meeting itself to take place in, in order for the vote to happen. So, somebody has to decide what kind of meeting is going to take place. And so, what happened was, we looked at what other districts were doing. We looked at, and we made various considerations last month for this and went over it with our solicitor. And we, we did everything we could to follow a process that would be fair, equitable, and, uh, safe for everyone.
Look, Joe, Joe, the problem is, that should be to begin with a board decision.
But if it's a full board decision, then a vote's required. You need a meeting.
We need to keep doing it illegally if we can because that's the easiest for us. And if you serve the board's rights and responsibilities and, and, so, those who, they can still, yes, no. They could feel, I'm assuming, the people are there, that's where they want to be. So that's how they would do it. But that would be fine. But do it that way, not this way. That's all I'm saying.
But no matter what, I know that the vice president would like to speak, Harry.
Hold on, hold on a second. Marissa, I have the mic here.
Hey, Harry. So, when you're saying that the whole board, no, no. When we're saying that the whole board needs to make that decision, in essence, when we showed up today, we did. So, you and Vera made the choice.
I'm hearing the result, though.
So, in essence, when you're saying the full board needs to make this decision, we did last week, last meeting, and we did this meeting by showing up. And then chose, the, those that chose to do it differently, we provided accommodations. So, the decision was made by the full board. Otherwise, others would have gone. So, the decision was made by the full board, just not necessarily in a voting fashion because that would have mandated us to have another meeting to make that decision. So, in essence, right now, we have the quorum, and that's where the vote came from.
The problem I have is this, the policy committee, is it the president or the president, vice president, and the superintendent, and the board secretary, and the board to be run, first to make that decision? Or is it the, the, uh, committee that was the reopening committee?
So.
And that's what's coming into effect. The other thing is that, you know, I came into a room where Phil was wanting a meeting, and he didn't have his mask on. You know, I had a conference town council meeting where he's representing the school district, and he goes up to the break before you were fair to you. And I had to tell him. Mike Templeton had to tell him. That, as a presence, you know, you could throw your shoes, Bill.
Okay, so, in regards to today's, Harry, Harry, in regards to today's meeting, this is the decision that was made by every one of us showing up today that came here. So, we can't keep going back and forth over the actions of Phil outside of this room today. So, today, we're going to focus on right now. So, right now, what could have happened? So, Phil, right now, or excuse me, Harry?
I'm just going to go with the, about just having it, uh, to the board.
What we, what we could have done, Harry, is in the two policy meetings that I was also in attendance for, this could have been brought up. And it could have been something that we could have discussed today or voted on. But we did not bring that up in the two policy meetings that we had prior to this meeting. So, if we would like to revisit this subject, this is something that we should bring up at a policy meeting. We would call it.
That's what I'm asking. I'm asking, what, what next month, who's going to say this?
I didn't understand you. But what I'm saying is, this is where we're at right now. And if you want to make change, then bring it up at the policy meeting, Harry.
I'm saying, we're going to make these decisions the next month.
Well, we could have done it. It could have been changed now if you would have brought it up as the chair of the policy committee when you chose not to. So, I don't think we should continue moving on with this. This is just wasting time.
Is the weather July 20th, 2020 exhibit one, Bill?
All right, moving on. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
If it's a third of.
Motion carries. Thank you. Instruction and Program Committee report. This is Whitney. Do you need the mic, my dear?
Well, I don't have a whole lot to read, so.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, uh, for the following items. Um, A, student classifications and placements as attached confidential exhibit J. And B, DLA update or the IMP committee meeting on September 29th, 2020.
So, um, so this is just a report. These are not items for a board vote or approval. So, um, Ms. Whitney, we, we were involved in the IMP committee meeting that included the DMA group of Delanco Mutual Aid. And I just, I wanted to give you the opportunity to share some highlights from that if you, if you wanted to about the.
I don't have any of my notes in front of me at that meeting, but, um, I was truly impressed by the work that these young people have done. Um.
Um, I'd just like to say that, um, I don't have a lot of my notes in front of me, but I was very much impressed by the work that these young people have done. Um, they have done an incredible amount of research, um, involving materials that they would like to share within the school. Um, they're coming up with, um, resources, with materials. Um, and, uh, just listening to them, I have to say that they are a credit to the school system. I was truly impressed.
Here, here, I agree completely, Ms. Whitney. And just to add to that a little bit is that, you know, we, we planned that meeting of the IMP Instruction and Program Committee so that we could specifically talk about equity, diversity, and other related topics with the DMA and the Delanco Mutual Aid group. And for those who might not be aware, that is a group of young individuals. I say young, they're about, they're college age. And what they're doing is, uh, they're part of the Black Lives Matter movement. They have, they organized a protest, march, peaceful protest and rally that took place in June. And since then, the district has been working with them to discuss these important topics. So, I appreciate, um, the opportunity to work with them, and I, I appreciate everything they're doing as well. So, that's all, that's all I have to say about the IMP committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitney. Finance Committee report. Mrs. Gonteski, would you like the mic to her?
Um, I talk loud, but, trust me. Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion for items A. I'm going to do this in segments because I have a couple of comments. Is that okay?
It'll be fine.
All right, um, I'd like to make a motion for items A through C as listed on the agenda. Um, D and E, as listed with the comments of, the second portion of D and all of E are non-budgeted items. Uh, items F through K are all budgeted items. And items L through N with special mention to item N as a follow-up to the group, the, um, the DMA group. We received this wonderful donation to our district. Um, and as part of that, I was asked, Mr. Mercer, can you give us any updates to the survey that was sent out to families on how to spend this money?
Absolutely.
Do you want to do a second first, Phil, or, so?
One, one, okay. I need a motion and a second for this.
Vera, can you unmute yourself?
I need a motion and a second for, uh, motion by Mrs. Gonteski. Have you a second on this?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. War. All right, Rose, and you wish to make some more comments on this?
I, I added them in.
Okay, you added them in.
Yeah, I just would just like to see if Phil can give us any additional information.
All right, hold on a second.
So, I'm bringing up some information on that now, just, just to let everybody know the process. There's a young man that's part of the DMA group named Robert Brown. And, uh, he apparently had some kind of connection with Monday Law. So, he said, you know, it would be a good idea to reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in a donation. I reached out to them. I worked with a lady named Shalaya Hicks, who was very, very kind, very polite, very professional. And, you know, I, I expected to receive, you know, okay, you know, we can give you a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. You know, instead, the next thing you know, I get a message from her saying, yes, we're donating, we're donating fifteen hundred dollars to your school district. And I was just floored by it. I thought it was amazing. Um, and, and so, the, working with Monday Law, just interacting with them, was just an amazing, positive experience, especially Ms. Hicks. I know Robert Brown did a fantastic job to assist us with that. The entire DMA group was instrumental in making that happen. Now, when it comes to the actual survey, um, I do have some information just to share, but I can't really give a full report at this time because, uh, when it comes to the responses, we're actually still receiving responses up until.
So, I said, you can just kind of give us a overview of what you have to far.
So, up until Friday, um, we'll be receiving the responses. But when we look at the survey, we do have twenty-six responses, actually, twenty-seven responses now. It's twenty-six the last time I saw. And there are responses about, um, purchasing books that are related to diverse topics with diverse characters from diverse authors. Um, actually, talking about, so, we're talking about books, but that's another topic as well as we've been working with Simon and Schuster on that separately. Um, also, um, opportunities for students to learn about, uh, different races, religions, cultures, and sexual orientations, you name it. Because there are various communities within the larger community that, that we need to acknowledge and learn about as well. So, I think, um, that's, that's one of the things, supporting materials such as posters, brochures, flyers, pictures, everything that would represent the type of diversity. Um, so, we, and we've received a, a number of really good ideas of how we can utilize the funds to express our strong belief in equity, diversity, inclusivity, and other topics that relate to that. So, um, I just, I appreciate the responses so far. There are a couple more days for the survey. But, um, what we're also looking at is crowns and markers that represent multicultural skin tones. I know some teachers already have those. You know, so, um, these are things that I think are very valuable for us to have. And, and I appreciate, going off of what we were talking about with curriculum, is I appreciate the opportunity for our district to really explore this topic because it's not something that our district has had a. to really explore this topic because it's not something that our district has had a deep focus on for, for many years. So, and I even told the group that, I said, you know, this is not something we've had a committee for. It's not something we've, we've really focused on as much as other topics. But now it's really at the forefront for us and I'm proud to, to be working with them. So, thank you, Mrs. Gonteski.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions or comments on this?
I just have a quick comment. Robert Brown's a good friend of mine and I'm very thankful for his hard work and the rest of the Delanco Mutual Aid, uh, organization for their contributions to the district.
Thank you, Cameron. Anyone else? Vera, you have to unmute if you have any comments. Okay, and I'm very happy to hear DMA, you know, did that, especially Monday Law, that was very good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Motion carries and Vince will have as an abstain on that. Okay, thank you, Rose. Appreciate it. Operation facilities report. Vince is in the room, so let's jump around. Let's go to policy committee report. Mr. Litwack.
Yeah, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
What I'd love to do, if possible, is just, um, pass it over to our board secretary. It'll be easier for people to understand and also just to, for people to understand in the room, et cetera, that what the first reading means.
So the first reading is just to provide notice and to elaborate the opportunity for board members to, um, input any ideas and thoughts that they have about the policy.
Okay, do you want me to elaborate on it a little bit more? Okay, basically, we know Strauss S M has a lot of alerts and a lot of misleading exhibits, different things which they recommend that we approve. This is the first reading, you know, and then we'll be having another. You're going to make the motion on this, Mr. Litwack?
Yeah, I, I knew that we accept A, B, C.
And that's where, and that's where, if you look at C, the last point Z, you know, is the restart and recovery plan. And that's what I was referring to that we needed to address at some point. And it just has to be just a vote, a simple thing. It would be, you know, the, the board is supposed to, um, just rely on the president, vice president, and the, uh, superintendent and the board secretary in consultation if needed with the, the legal, the design, what we will do.
All right, and I'll hear a second.
I think that legally that would protect everyone better for the office of the.
Okay, not a problem, Harry. Do I hear a second for this?
All second, Cameron.
Second for Mr. Cameron Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, motion carries. Okay, we jumped over Mr. Callanmiller. Vince, it will go to you for operation and facilities committee report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. No problem. That was a worst-related government call. Anyway, it was quick and I apologize. I didn't think.
Not a problem, sir.
Facility reports for the month of September, uh, food maintenance activities, schools closed due to drought, obviously. Yard turmoil, heat lacking, depletion of work orders and maintenance. Special project activities are as follows. Once the nation boarded, gained five thirty-seven at Pearson, had fires, barbally needed. Came through top of Van Motor, boys' bathroom in lobby. Changed the boilerboard and the screen in the small boiler for the bakery office. Appears to have some kind of power surge that burned it out. Repaired walking freezer in the kitchen, had boilers open and clean by the boiler company at old schools. Did the PM test fire the boilers for the school year, running all sinks, flushable toilets, running water fountains daily. Once in the morning, again in the afternoon during night shift. Put the cart together and completed the board on the park for five two one zero five at Walmart. Turned all bushes at Pearson, removed some trees and shrubs that were blocking the view of traffic and crossing with kids. Took down the tree next to the black pole because of the black pole could get caught and damaging the flag and the black poles. Service for more leaf collector motors to prepare for leaf pickup. That's all, Harry.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, um, get ready to look at my page if you can, do that. All right, uh, policy committee report. Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I will make a motion to approve the following. A, the updated substitute list revised with the adventum. B, an increase, uh, for the substitute custodian rate for Patrick O'Malley, the thirteen dollars per hour. C, an appointment of Amanda Smith as a home instruction teacher for a three K student at the DTEA contractual rate of fifty-five dollars per hour with a two week term and start date. D, the leave of absence from the league rental, a grade five teacher with an approximate start date of October twenty-third, twenty twenty and an approximate end date of April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And E, the appointment of Deborah Letty to the position of longer substitute as a grade five teacher with an approximate start date aforementioned, uh, as the board rate approved rate for substitute teacher. I'll make that ruling.
I'll second.
Second from Stephen Moore. Uh, okay, questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Callanmiller.
Will we roll call?
Mr. Aron, you should get on. You're negative.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, here I didn't hear you.
Can you, can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Okay, my vote before you didn't get it because, um, my phone wasn't on mute. Can I go back to fourteen to give you my vote?
What number is that?
Fourteen, committee, I cannot, um, give my vote for that.
That's impossible. Okay.
So A, now, okay.
I would say, I, I think that's a point of order. We should continue with what we have now and then proceed after.
Yeah, let's continue with policy committee.
Let's do a roll call and then.
Right, we'll go back to it.
So this is for personnel.
This is for the personnel committee report, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, so I go up for that.
Mr. Gonteski?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Phil Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Litwack?
Yes, and I just want to just tell that, um, I'm glad that we're able to find someone to touch with, who is such a neighbor that kids can play with technology.
Mr. Orr?
Yes.
Ms. Whitney, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now, Vera, you didn't get your vote recorded for what?
For fourteen, five, five, committee report.
Okay, I'm ready.
For finance, okay.
A, okay, A like apple, C like cat, no. D like golf, true, L like love, yes. M like mother, no. N like dance, yes.
Also, for the policy committee.
Okay, for policy committee report. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I think that Harry, you're for the policy.
For which?
For superintendent's report. Harry, you're.
Okay, for superintendent, for superintendent's report, Harry and Vera, we did not get your vote on that?
On that, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, from Harry also, okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Board liaison reports. Riverside, Mrs. Gonteski, do you need the mic again?
Um, no, I don't, no, I'm good. Um, just to keep the board informed that Riverside is also continuing with in-person board meetings. They're still following their hybrid. Um, they did have a exposure case, um, but it didn't affect their hybrid. Everything stayed as scheduled. They did have a second exposure case, um, which quarantined the football team for about a week. Um, but everything seems to be getting back to normal on that. Um, at our board meeting last week, uh, the numbers were shared for the, uh, class of twenty twenty graduates. There were a total of ninety-nine graduates and the pre-graduation rate, um, is ninety-one point two percent. Now, obviously, there were some differences of with COVID. Um, but I still think they did their jobs.
All right. Thank you, Rose.
Mr. Jenkins, if I might make a quick promise on that. Uh, I'm now interning at Riverside two days a week and I've seen their day-to-day operations of the elementary, middle, and high school. And they seem to be implementing the hybrid option very effectively from what I've seen. So kudos to Riverside for that. I hope the Delanco can help take that.
All right, thank you, Cameron. All right, New Jersey School Board, New Brunswick County School Board, do you have anything, Mr. Litwack?
Yes, I do. There was a few weeks ago, I was keeping short to do highlights in the, uh, on the twenty-first, uh, September, it was a meeting of the, um, statewide meeting of the executive board of school boards that is by still representing not only the Delanco, but the county. Uh, the person that's been doing the legislative connections that they use to require Mike France, somebody named Nolan, he's a student representative, and he's retired and Jonathan Fishman, which is his post. So the legislature, Jonathan, actually was contributing to this work there as well, uh, during COVID. Uh, they're looking at healthcare, how do we provide to the district with the education healthcare plan? And basically, the only variety, uh, messages, where will the money come from and where? So the work jobs that are happening in October and hopefully people will be attending those. The president, you know, you can do it, they say, um, you're starting, uh, you have a full year where you can visit, any of all the physical programs, information, et cetera. Um, there was a county law meeting on the fifteenth. Wait a minute. On the twenty-third, uh, county law meeting. And, uh, the superintendent from the elementary district, Dr. Carlos Burnbaum, presented a very interesting, uh, overview of what we're studying on right now. And with school-based research, this is a mental health, um, and that's an area that really needs to be pursued. Um, there was a report, the twenty-twenty, the early report on psychological effects of shutdown. So we have the, of the, what they're looking to do. They, they realize it's really affected kids and all of them, the negative psychological variety of their structure. Um, and then a lot of people are going with the hybrid system. It's like a social and emotional learning, it's still very problematic. And, you know, it was after, uh, maybe on a fifth of October. And this started on, and this is, as I mentioned, a very democratic process. And this is nominating even where the school associated, uh, the faculty's place throughout the, the conference and the legislative. That's it. That's it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Litwack. Attention committee meeting, I haven't been to any attention committee meetings because they've been virtual. All right, going to old business, New Jersey School Board Workshop. Usually it was down in Atlantic City. Obviously, it's going to be fully virtual. October twenty, twenty-first, and twenty-second. If any of you would like to sign up for it, you know, let Vicki know. I believe Harry's already signed up for it. The other thing is discussion of the board.
Before we talk about, we really want to know how many board members want to be involved in that because there's a, there's a group rate that we're being given.
All right, well.
And the question is whether the group rate is actually worth it.
Okay, Harry's interested in going. Is anybody else interested in going to the New Jersey School Board Workshop twenty, twenty-first, and twenty-second? That's all for.
Doing a break today, not typically going, you're perfect, although you want to be.
Okay, nobody's interested in going to it. The only one interest that has interest in it is Harry, so.
Well, and I, I expressed an interest as superintendent. I know my colleagues are doing it. But what we need to do is look at the pricing and say what makes sense. Because if we just pay for Harry and me, for example, that could be far less than the, the group pricing that we are being given. So, so we wouldn't buy the group.
That is that there's three new board members that they, that information that they can have access to for their first year at home because we're not spending nine hundred dollars for that every time a board member has access to it.
Okay, well, you can, you can check into it, Joe.
We're checking the pricing. If it's only the two of us that are going to sign up.
Okay. Great, I understand. That makes sense.
Are we allowed, six of us don't want to, or seven of us don't want to do it? Are we allowed to, 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 to?
Well, uh, you know, we have to, we have to do it on the board to remain on the board.
If we had nothing interested, we could open it up to administrators, teachers, officers, et cetera. But it really is for the board, you know, that's, that's really what most of the geared for is, is the board. But, you know, if, if only one board member and I are thinking of doing it, then I think that the group rate wouldn't make sense because the group rate really is paying for up to twenty-five people.
I, I was just saying, as a group rate, but also that you're going to have at least two board members.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I don't want to say that they couldn't be involved.
We're, we're, we're not good budgeting with people that physically don't have any.
It's a lot less than one hundred dollars just to have everyone have access to this for the next year. And they aren't interested to know this, so.
So it sounds like Harry's advocating for the group rate.
So I guess I have to see if we will bring this, I mean, that any board member can access it the rest of the year. So maybe I was.
Yeah, would you, could you check into that, please, then? Okay, great, tremendous.
And as for candidates, I don't think that we would want to leave them out. But I also know that typically they haven't been included in that kind of.
I'm just saying it's special circumstance because normally you have a healthy group of city board members.
Well, if it's good for the whole year, then after the election, if they wish to be involved in it.
Then that would be very good.
So Vicki, check that out and you can give us a report in our next meeting. Does that sound? All right, great.
Yeah, I would, I would just, well, can you check this hand? Can you check the feeling of that that we have at least two new board members if that carries the bill?
That's, that's what we're going to look into, Harry.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Now, next question is discussion of board committee versus committee of the whole. Right now, we have board committees where, you know, we break it up into a group. There's not, uh, a quorum and then, you know, there's a chair of each subcommittee. Versus committee of a whole where everything is discussed in front of the board here. Does anybody wish to discuss that or do you think we should make that a policy personnel matter?
I like the committee of the whole because then I'll be more informed of what's going on and I'll understand better.
Well, what we'll do is, Harry, you're chairman of that. What do you put that down as something that you're going to discuss in your next policy personnel?
The policy committee, they want to bring it up to the board to see what do all the board members think.
What do all the board members think? Okay, what do all the board members think?
Yeah, I mean, it would be helpful if we had Jesse Adams explain what it means and how it operates and what the code is and how it works.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we're reiterating the same, we're discussing. I don't believe we were in favor of it.
Mr. Jenkins, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Jenkins.
That's the whole thing. Things change. We see that. We see that things change. Just because we weren't, you know, something before is not always a very.
It was just a question, Harry.
You can't go through, you can't steal second base till you're going further. You just can't do it.
It was just a question.
What we do is it, we do it. It's just information. That's it.
All right.
As I was saying, Mr. Jenkins.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jenkins.
As the most senior member on the board, being you've been here the longest, has this ever been brought up in the previous X amount of years you've been here by other board members?
No, it hasn't. The reason it hasn't is because by having the subcommittees, it allows the subcommittee to discuss something. it allows the subcommittee to discuss something, to bring their recommendations back to the board instead of the whole board being in meetings to ten, eleven o'clock at night. That was the purpose of that, to make the meetings a little bit shorter. And then, the chairman of that subcommittee would bring it to the whole board and discuss.
Well, can I make a comment?
I don't think. You look at the other.
I don't think it's, you know, when you say the reasoning, part of the reasoning was to length of time. I get that, but I think it's more important that it's the discussions that happen. There are times when we are discussing certain topics in the committee meetings that we get pretty in-depth in these discussions. And I, my feeling is, when you're trying to have those type of discussions with nine people, you are going to miss topics, you're going to get off-topic. I mean, you see, just in our committee meetings, we get off-topic sometimes because something raises a question to something else. So, I don't think it's, yeah, I mean, you can't say by length of time, because we're here till eleven o'clock anyway. But I think it's more important of the topics and the discussions that are happening with four or five people versus nine.
Is that true? Vince, your comments?
I agree with all the schools on it, which would provide the subcommittees to know that, you know, you go on that path, you go on that route on. So, you, you got detailed discussion when you do subcommittees. I would just say, stay with it.
Okay. Lynn?
My feeling is that there are people on this board that have areas of expertise. And I would say that there are some committees that I don't know how much I could really add to, where the ones that I am involved in, I feel that I probably have more knowledge and that I probably have more information from part. So, that would be my feeling, if we keep the rules up.
Thank you. Marissa?
Yes, I feel the subcommittees are more effective. I feel like more progress can be made, and we still are able to bring those decisions and those recommendations to the full board. So, I still feel it's still very productive in involving everybody in the final decision of what was discussed. So, I'm going to stick with subcommittees.
Great. Steven?
Almost verbatim, Mrs. Karen Newkey said that if the subcommittees, if done properly, are most effective throughout the whole school to continue to operate. I just will say one thing, and I've always advocated for this. One, out of all the subcommittees, in one area, that I think it's very important that you have at least one workshop where the board comes together is budget. That is a very important topic that tells the story of the district. That's the engine that drives the district. And I think that there are a lot of questions that board members have when they see the published budget, and I just think that, and I do believe that we have created, you know, the appropriate structure for that in that workshop where board members can come and ask questions. Because like I said, when I, you know, first got to the board, you know, we voted to introduce, and then we went back and said, well, just point out to the board, these are the things that were in the budget, and some of the board members' dolls at the table. Because, and as I said, we just voted to introduce it, you know, and we did. So, I think that it's great that we have that budget workshop prior to budget introduction. And I would encourage the board that going forward, you continue to do that. As far as the other items, I think that the committee structure works well. To Rose's point, as, you know, getting really in-depth, if the majority of the subcommittee comes to agreeing on it, it's the full board. The chairmen of those subcommittees are supposed to be the ones that keep the meeting on track. And that's, you know, one of the main jobs of the chairman of the subcommittees, keep the meeting focused and on track. And, you know, while I personally don't mind the meetings going to one, two AM in the morning, you know, and planning the town parade to go to one AM, you know, our school, our school district can go to one AM, two AM. So, it's a very important topic and how to discuss it. So, I just sum it up, keep it the subcommittees.
Thank you, Stephen.
I do agree with Stephen about the budget. I mean, the budget does drive every decision, so that would be something that I would want to.
Very definitely on the budget. Cameron, do you have anything on it?
I can come with what Lynn had to say. If we were a committee of the whole, there'd be seven areas where I'd be less useful than others, say, personnel and ground committee. And I agree with them both on the form of.
All right, very good. Vera, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I think we have to look at a hybrid.
Harry, your voice.
I think it's Harry.
Oh, it's Harry, okay. I thought it was Vera, all right. I asked Vera if she had anything?
Okay, my feeling is that it should be fluid. We can keep these subcommittees, but if a board member wants to hop over to another committee to become more deeply informed on an issue, that board member should be allowed that freedom to keep their original responsibilities, but take on some odd responsibilities periodically if they have a strong interest in the topic that comes up.
All right, but then we have to watch out for quorum issues, Vera. But I agree with what you're saying. Harry, do you have something?
Yeah, well, that just goes into what I would say, of looking at a hybrid that is going to be most effective for us right now. Because right now, things are quite different. And if we virtually have a hybrid form now, if we're doing the, you know, we still have the committee, and one of the things you can add is the number of people or three, whatever. And then, the obvious thing is to be able to have everyone in town to be sure of the meeting. And that's what we were having a couple times when we did have the executive board starting six o'clock, we could warn people of what was going on because it's an awkward feeling. And I think all of us, also, as a new board member, that we're meeting and we don't know what the heck's going on. You know, what's going on here? How's this going? I don't know, right? We're relying on the people that are, you know, whatever, who's up and running, show how it plays out. And I think we should look at a possible hybrid. And I would say, it still can be a good idea to have Jesse Adams, because he's seen these things all around the state and, you know, with the pros and cons of it.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Okay, well, obviously, we're going to keep things basically the same, and if at a later date we wish to revisit it, we can. All right, new business, discussion of possible policy to limit referendum voting in November. Joe, can you explain that?
That was something that, that was something that Ms. Darmo had brought up during our policy committee, and so, the policy chair, along with other policy committee members, said, let's bring it to the full board for at least a discussion. It's not being voted on, it's just something for the board to discuss as to whether a referendum should be voted on only in November or at another time of year. So, I know Ms. Darmo feels strongly about this, and so, of course, she can share her thoughts before anyone else, so they know what the rationale is of her bringing this up.
Okay, can I bring that up now?
Sure.
Okay, so last year, you know, I'm very involved in Georgetown, that's where I grew up. And last year, they had a vote on a lot of, like, twenty fifteen dollars or something, construction projects. And they had moved that vote to December. And there was a lot of issues that were brought up about how a lot of voters didn't know what was going on, they didn't even know about the vote, what was in December. And my feeling was that these kind of votes are so important, we want maximum participation. So, anything involving, you know, spending a lot of money on your school, the extra spending that you would have in a referendum, that's how during the November regular election, to maximize participation and also cut down on cost on, you know, spending for having a whole new vote at another time. So, hopefully, in November, it cuts down costs and it maximizes participation. That's it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on this?
I feel like it makes sense, we wouldn't want the most voter count for big budget issues like this. And I'm sure the residents of Newton's Landing would have something to say about referendum spending for school.
Everybody thinks of it. They contribute very little children out to our district.
My biggest concern with limiting our referendum voting to November is if we do have an emergent situation and we need to get a vote out to the public to vote on something that's financially based, and we have to wait to November, something could fall through the cracks here, and we will be limited to not being able to act on it. And let's say happened in December, we would have to wait an entire year to vote on this. And I feel like limiting it to just November could be a negative thing to do. I think that we should continue to keep it open with the idea that if we have the ability to put it in November during the election time, then also, let's do it. But if we have an emergent situation, I would like the flexibility and the availability to put it on at any time so that we can get what we need if necessary.
Makes a lot of sense. I agree with you also. And I also think that if it's a case where the state is offering certain funding at certain times, it would be advantageous for us to use that funding at the time. And I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into one particular date. Rose, do you have any comments on this?
No, I can't say better than what Marissa just said.
All right, thank you. Vince?
We should hold enough emergency funds on hand to cover emergencies. If we don't have enough.
Vera, hold on a please. Hold on a please. Vince, go ahead, please.
I think we should open in case something happens, just setting ourselves in a condition of a bit of a, trying to save yourself.
All right, thank you, sir. Lynn?
I completely agree with Marissa.
Okay, great. Do you have any more comments on this, Vera or Harry?
My comment is that for real emergencies where we need to have a vote right away, that shouldn't even be an issue. We need to have enough emergency funds on our hands. If a bliver, blue wolf, or whatever, we have to have those funds in hand now. So, I hope we do. I really hope we do have those emergency funds in hand. If we do, there's no reason that we would have to have an emergency referendum.
Okay. Harry, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just, Vera, because of things were concerned, I think it's more vital to have flexibility. And, you know, I, we're going to have an audit. It's just, you know, that was part of our package. So, you know, we'll see where we are. If we are where we are, and in an emergency, you get a win. You get a win like any other operating, operation does. And if you can say, okay, we need it now, this money, and we will get the, you know, a bondage as soon as we can on what we have to wait till November. But why would you run a handcuff yourself? I agree, Paul Hardaway was a great one, and Phil was an excellent one.
All right, thank you, Harry. Okay, well, we pretty well figured that out then, didn't we? All right, moving on, public comment on. You have two other items. Okay, for new business, go ahead.
No, not only that. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. So, just two other items from new business. One is related to the livestream that we conducted last month as well as this month. It was never discussed by the board, and it is not written in policy, what we do with those recordings. So, this was brought up by a community member during a meeting this week, actually. And it was something I had discussed with Albert Panero, our network administrator, of what should we do? So, for the time being, the livestream from last month is in an account that's labeled private. But I know that there's a feeling that we can just keep those livestream videos on our own website and say, well, here's a video of the meeting. So, I know that community members feel strongly about that. And I just wanted the whole board to have a chance to just decide, what can we do? It doesn't require a vote, it's really just a discussion so that I can proceed. So, that's the first thing.
Okay, does anybody have any problem with us archiving it? Or would you rather have it open to the public? I don't see any problem with having the public available to it. Marissa?
I agree. I think the public should have access to refer back to it if they choose to do so. So, keeping it public is just fine.
It's basically just highlights our minutes.
Aren't they subject to?
Well, the, if the district keeps that record, which it now does, yes.
And then, there's usually like a timeframe that you have, having to play the record, you have to keep it for X amount of time anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we could keep them in perpetuity because it will be in a digital medium, just like our, you know, our minutes. If we talk about our minutes, which are the official record, right? The law still states that we have to have hard copies of the official minutes in binders, and which to me, you know, I would like it to be more paperless when it comes to so many different aspects of what we do. But, yeah, that's the official record, and it's still kind of archaic the way that they're telling us that we should do it. And so, this is another record, although not the strict official record of the meeting, simply because the minutes are the official record. So, no matter what, it's a record of the meeting. Everything that's being said, if it's recorded, is right there for everyone to see and hear.
Well, I think sometimes with the minutes, we're not recording every detail of our discussion. And I think it would be nice if the public can access it for those times when we have these deep dive discussions. Whether you're watching it or you're sitting here, you're not going to remember it three months from now, but if something comes up, you can jump on and review the discussion again. I think it's good.
All right. I like that idea also, Vera. Harry, do you agree with that?
Yes, keep them open to the public, and I think it's great if they can see that over a request.
All right, thank you. Harry, you're good with that also?
I mean, I, I think I would feel I have a lot of issues, but any time the library can be opened and used, I think it's a pretty good use of it. That would be the Bradbury scheme.
All right, great, Harry. Thank you. All right, Joey, you have something else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. So, one other item, and so, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge Pagan Harper, who's in the audience. Mrs. Harper, you had mentioned that we could utilize a microphone during our meeting, which last month was considered, and we ultimately said, well, we don't know how safe or healthy that would be, but this month, we considered it again and went with the idea that you proposed. So, I just wanted to turn back the clock for a second and say, thank you for that recommendation that we considered, rejected, and then accepted. So, I just wanted to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, now, I'm going to open this to public comment on agenda items, and I'll open it up to the public first.
Non-agenda, please.
Oh, non-agenda items, correction. Hey, go ahead, please.
I'm Pagan Harper, out of the two hundred five I'm playing. I've been president for Michael for forty-five years. A lot, a long, long time. I've been a science teacher here for twenty-three years. And I'd like to say I'm a very proud president of our teachers' union. I'm in my second year. I represent over forty teachers and support staff. And these teachers and support staff love the line up. Guys, it's something I was saying, I want to read it because I get emotional when I'm talking about our teachers and Miss Cathy. Because I've been around a long time. I'm here tonight on behalf of the DTBA members that I represent. I am here because we deserve a fair, active contract. And we can't work towards a reasonable contract unless you, the members of the board of education, commit to negotiating with us a good faith at bargaining table. As educators, we believe our strength, bond, and our ability to work together. We want to work with you, and we must work together. We want to work together with you because we've been bargaining since last spring, and we feel we're not done yet here. We ended last school year and started this school year as the most challenging time of our careers, all of our careers, without an active contract. And sadly, we've been nothing to win at the table. This is unacceptable. It's not right. Our members deserve better, our communities deserve better, but most of all, our students deserve better. Make no mistake, our working conditions, our student learning conditions. Make no mistake, our working conditions, our student learning conditions, when you refuse to replace us, you deny our children a better, safer learning environment. We have to work together because for us as educators, who in March drops everything we know about teaching at one day time, shifted to all three months start teaching, counseling, and guiding the students through this unprecedented time. The professional stand-ups, your 12, 14, 16 hours a day, answering students at parenting meetings, zooming in at all hours of the night so that students felt safe and a little bit less confused. We have demonstrated time and time again our commitment to our students and to the community that we love. We have to work together because of this pandemic that is raging across the country, and the community requires the BOE and the DTEA to work together. During this pandemic, the U, meaning us, some of the children of the community, our communities, and we deserve the respect and stability of a fair, active contract. For us, a contract, an active one, is a sign of respect. It means that you, as more members, value what we bring to our classrooms every single day, either in classroom, on the computer screen, or a combination of both. It demonstrates that you are willing to listen to us, work with us, and work through these challenging, these challenging issues. We are willing to work with you through the challenges presented this year, and we want to work, be able to work with us at the table. Here in time that we pride ourselves, are willing to do what's best for our children, no doubt in the circumstances. The COVID-19 pandemic has presented a much challenging event of my career, and I've been doing this for 37 years, 24 years. As we, the members of the DTA, continue to navigate and honor the borders of this pandemic, we urge you to embrace what we continue to do for this top school district. One example of young, above and beyond without the, the respect of an active contract is committed. Kim spent over six hours creating a structural bandwidth for the teachers and the parents to transition into the more productive virtual process. This was all on her own time. Kim also continues to support the teachers every day. I combine, Kim hops in, I have non-speaking, non-English speaking students, Kim translates what I'm saying into their language so they can understand what's going on, and she's doing this to help me. She takes breakout rooms and helps our special education team with students. Another example is our custodians guy, Wayne, Laurel, Talian, Bobby. They worked countless hours, and still, every single day, getting our buildings covered safely. There are other countless acts of heroism that members of the DTA do, each of which I'd too much mention. We do these acts for our students. We do this for our community. To put it simply, we are dedicated to this district because we love this district. But just because we love what we do does not mean we should be asked to work without the respect of a fair, active contract. That's the respect we deserve. It seems that this has become a pattern, and many members are noticing. That seems every three years or so, the president of the DTA passes a man up here and makes a similar statement. Please come to the table in your state, ready to reach realistic, tangible agreements. Thank you for your listening.
Should I reply to this, folks?
No, I don't think so.
Everybody up here appreciates exactly what the DTA does. We understand that these are trying times. These are trying times for everyone. They're trying times for the public out here, they're trying times for us, and we understand. You know, we appreciate everything you do, and you have, you have been asked to do things that no teachers have ever been asked to do before. We understand that. As for negotiating a contract, we've already had two meetings. We're not allowed to discuss what we are talking about at the meetings.
We're not saying we're discussing.
You know?
Oh, no, 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 we never say that.
Right, we're not allowed to discuss that. I understand that. We've had two meetings with you. We are trying to bargain in good faith. You have a contract. Regardless of when the contract expires, you still have a contract.
Not an active contract.
Then the only difference between-
Or the meaning is.
You know, we are working, well, to, you know, get an equitable agreement between yourself and the school district. That's what we're trying to do. We're not sitting there putting the screws to the DTA. We're trying to be fair. We're trying to work with everybody. But it's, you know, in these trying times with the budget constraints and everything else, this is not simple. It's a lot difficult, but we are trying. That's all I'm really going to say on that.
As a member of the negotiation committee, I mean, I, I hear you, Mrs. Harper, and I respect your statement. Um, and, and do forgive me, I'm just a little confused. I, in my opinion, I thought we were negotiating in good faith. We just scheduled meetings. Meetings from the spring were pushed back because of COVID. And we just met and we scheduled more additional meetings to discuss. We really haven't, I mean, there were a couple items that we really haven't, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm kind of confused with that. I, I felt negotiations were just kind of ramping up. I mean, we just set meetings. And in regards to contract, I'm very happy to hear you say active contract, because last time around, that word wasn't used. And I think it's a little bit, in my opinion, misleading to say that while, yes, you don't have an active contract, you're still covered under the terms of the prior contract. There are just certain, there are just certain things that I'm not going to say that, you know, we have to discuss and come to an agreement on. When, when you say we're going to do a three-year contract, you know, at the end of that contract, that's the point in time they've chosen, that we sit down, we open the contract, we discuss, do we want to do any language changes? Are there any, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, we, we just started. So I don't know where this is coming from.
Well, if you want to be honest, we tried since last November. Yeah, it was November that we tried.
But we were meeting to reset for last spring, which I remember.
No, I said, I said last spring because that's when we were to get to, but we've been trying since last November to fall.
Right. Understanding that our contract was ending in June 2020, we started setting dates November 2019. They were not, they were not strong. So this is, Mrs. Harper.
Is this accurate?
Yes, it is.
Because I remember the meeting.
We had one meeting where we, where we exchanged ground.
Yes.
COVID happens, we decided not to do that. However, we, the DTA negotiation team approached November 12th about this.
Right, we, we had two meetings.
So, so, I, although, like, in my perspective, you're, that is, you're kind of going to run this thing, the whole point, you know, we were starting to negotiate a contract that was expiring in spring.
Right.
Pretty extreme. So we, so we were ready, so, so us only having two meetings isn't because the DTA negotiating team was, we were prepared and ready to fight if there was a, there was some different mistakes. So, I'm just saying, but that isn't-
I mean, I'm not at liberty, I mean, I got to be, walk a very fine line, and this is the point I try to make to the board. We're very limited on what we can say, and I think the DTA knows that we're very limited on what we can say.
And we're not discussing-
And we can't really, we can't really combat that, and I think you guys know that, that there are, there are items we can't discuss.
You wrote the two meetings, when we already had one last November that we're, that's when we tried, so we've had two meetings perhaps, but there were other things before that are not being counted toward our negotiation plans.
But what I'm saying, I'm-
This process started here.
I, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is, is that we had meetings scheduled for the spring. I, I too was hoping that this would be a lot farther along than what it is. But I'm, and I'm pretty sure, I remember those meetings, that meeting when we set dates, I think it was April, and then, and, and I think even March, because there was some concern about certain dates not working out for everybody due to holiday. But I remember we're setting dates in spring, and then COVID hit, and no one could predict that, I'm not arguing that. But I, I'm just, I just want to make it clear to the public and the people listening, it is my impression that we are negotiating in good faith. I mean, we, 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 we do, we have sat down, we've had good discussions, I mean, in, in my opinion, I mean, I-
And we're going to continue to do that also until we reach an agreement with the union and the, uh, school board, and that's what we're going to continue to do.
You know, and, and I, and I do hope, and this is something we have to discuss with the council, I do think the public, in some sense, should be entitled to, and I don't know if we get as a board, they should know what the topics we're discussing, and they should be entitled to, so they could better understand where we as a board are coming from, because when you hear comments like this, it maybe vilifies us in a sense almost.
Those topics are confidential.
I, I, I know.
It's confidential because it's in the middle of being discussed and, you know, we-
And the NJDA knows that.
Right, we're not allowed to discuss it, that's, you know, so true. We're working to reach an agreement with you, you know? Mind you, there's still the existing contract. I'm a union member, so I understand. You start negotiating, you're still covered under your same contract, even though you're still working, and then if there's a settlement and there's a raise involved, it's all becomes retroactive. So, you know, it's, it's not like we're hanging anybody out to dry. We are negotiating, and we're trying to continue to negotiate.
Can I say a comment?
Yes, please.
Just, just so, we are negotiating for our livelihood, not, we're not negotiating yours. See, that is the thing that comes, we're negotiating our livelihood, you aren't negotiating ours. So just take that into consideration. This is what we do for a living. He respects you as a board, respects your decisions, however, you're not, isn't, you're livelihood, it is ours, and we're just trying to come together and work together, so.
That is one thing we all take very seriously. We take very seriously, and you've got to also realize, though, in budget negotiations and with the way things have been going, we take everything into account, because the last thing we want to have is a reduction in force or anything that's going to affect anything. I would love to see the school district have, you know, have a million more dollars to put into education, but unfortunately, that's not happening right now. We're balancing a very fine line, and we have to take a look at everything, but we will be negotiating in good faith. You're very welcome. All right, anything else from the public on, on, on agenda items?
Phil, how you doing?
What a heck of a day, I'll tell you that.
Eric Moss, 837 Laurel Street. A handful of things here. One to add to a Riverside thing, and I got to sleep in a month for a freshman there, because I was doing, like, the last, uh, four meetings, there's freshman, the language graduate, it's still. Two, since the, the subject of the teachers' contract is up here, um, are there currently negotiating, negotiation meetings scheduled, simply yesterday?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, have, have you guys had to a point of, like, backfiring mediation, anything like that, or is it still, is it, like, are those meetings scheduled?
No, but we also, we shouldn't discuss any steps-
No, no, Eric, you were simply yesterday, I thought it was-
But Mr. Moss, did yesterday know that you're asking for reveals the information about the negotiation process?
Understood, understood. I appreciate that. Um, can, can I make a suggestion maybe for moving forward, pointing out the three or four that would have here? Uh, that if a board member chooses to attend the meeting remotely, whatever may be, whatever the reasons may be, if they're doing a liaison report or a committee report, can that potentially be submitted in advance in writing, so that way the public and everybody can actually kind of take a look at that, because trying to understand some of the, the stuff that's being said is near impossible. Um, and it's not a, that's not meant to be, uh, a slap in the face to anybody, it's more like, hey, you know, I'm knocking on, I, I don't know about anybody else sitting here, but I have a hell of a time trying to hear that. I, I, I like it, yeah.
It's even harder up there.
Um, but, and, and I'm sure he has a lot of great things to say, a lot of informative things to say, but maybe moving forward, that stuff can be kind of submitted in writing or in outline moving forward. Um, number four, and, and I'm going to ask Phil and Joe this, if I'm allowed to kind of ask this question, I might have to ask a question about the, the logic behind a vote by, by certain people, um, theoretically, because I, I hear something, like, last month, for example-
Before you continue, uh, just so you know, our policy indicates that you would direct comments to the presiding officer, right?
Correct, correct.
Which means that you're not technically supposed to question board members about their votes. And that's based on policy, it's not, it's not the will of Joe Merson, that's, that's based on policy.
Right. So I'll, I'll send an email to that particular committee's chairperson, right? And kind of ask a clarifying comment on-
I guess, I mean, the issue is, and I'm saying this to, to protect the board members and their rights to vote however they choose, is that they're not supposed to be put on the spot and questioned for why they're voting a certain way. You know, they, they, they can vote in any way that they choose, based on whatever reason that they have, and they can provide reasons and write questions and comments, but they're not required to answer a question.
No, and I can just, I can make a comment, and that person doesn't have to answer.
You could say, I really didn't like the fact that so-and-so did this, and then you would say, thank you for your comment.
Well, I question the fact that a board member voted yes on special education places the past two months, but then no paying no bills the past two months. It's just kind of interesting for that aspect, that's all.
One of the things about being up here in the school board, it takes a while to learn some things, and, and there's a learning curve involved in it also.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anyone else?
Sure. Uh, I'm Steve LaLala, I'm going to step forward, I can hear on the street.
Okay, very good, Steve, and I, we've got a question down here from you on the bottom. Uh, we have two questions from you, or one from-
No. Right, I just wanted, so I, I did, I sent in a question about, uh, is he encouraging you, uh, for the board to archive videos permanently online?
Yes.
And I heard your discussion, so I'm glad for your, um, what's going to be with the plan. I just wanted to make sure that you, that the board addressed the question from Catherine Kirsichkeely about test scores. I know that you have it in front of you, uh, Mr. Merson or-
That's, that's one of the things we're going to be discussing next.
Sure, I'm happy to read the question.
Uh, okay. You have a problem with that, or?
Whatever you like to say.
Okay.
The presiding officer.
The presiding officer, okay, you, you want to go over, uh, go ahead, you can-
I, I can read it, or Mr. Merson can read it, but as long as I'm here. Okay, this is a question from Catherine Kirsichkeely at 740 Rancocks Avenue. Okay, for the 2018-2019 school year, both Pearson and Walnuts Street School were well below the minimum state goals for English, English Language Arts and Math assessments, according to the NJA School Performance Report. It was the district's worst performance in recent history. A school meets the state's ELA goal when greater than 57.8% of students meet or exceed ELA standards. At Pearson, 28% met ELA standards, and Walnuts, 36.6% did, well short of the 57.8% minimum, uh, for, for meeting the standard. Uh, one more statistic sentence, a school meets the state's math goal when greater than 44.4%, uh, 44.4% of students meet or exceed standards. At Pearson, 35.6% of students met standards in math, and at Walnuts, 31% did. So these low scores have an effect on long-term student achievement and life outcomes, as well as a town's character and property values for years to come. Uh, you've had this data for some time now, so you should be able to share your plan for improving these scores. What is the plan for improving test scores into my goal?
Start with finish?
Whatever you'd like to say, Mr. President.
Test scores, that's something. Now, I know all these teachers out here, and I know both my kids and a lot of people here, their kids went through. You got the most devoted teachers out here I've seen, but we've got a lot of, I don't know, like, Joe explained, some of these students that we do have coming in, that it's students that are here for a little bit, not getting out there, getting in for a couple months, and then they're gone, transient students. Test scores, in my opinion, don't really show exactly what the teachers are doing. You know, and the reason I say that, you can have a teacher reaching a kid, making great progress with a kid, but when they take some of the test scores, they're not taking some of the things into account that the teachers do. Now, Joe's going to explain to you a little bit about some of the teachers, or some of the kids that are in and out of the school, you get them for a couple months, vote them- or some of the kids that are in and out of the school, you get them for a couple of months, vote them, and then they're gone. Don't we, just, we'll just talk about this, these test scores right here. I'll hand it over to Joe a little bit more. Because I've got a little tongue tied here.
So, I'm not prepared to give a full presentation on this topic tonight. But what I can say is that if you go to our website, and I'll just kind of walk everybody through it right now, that if you go to our website, there's a section called Board of Education. And then there's a subsection called Other Resources. And under that section, that will have our performance reports. The most recent ones are from 1819. And then that section also has presentations related to ARC and NJSLA. Now, I'm not going to say that those presentations contain all of the answers to all the questions about test scores, but they do contain a significant amount of information about some of the things that you're asking for. So what I will also say, though, is that there will be a presentation in November related to student data from last year. Now, this is a state requirement. Even though we didn't have standardized test scores last year, we're still required to present data about student achievement. So I will be sharing that, although I'm just giving everyone fair warning that we don't have complete data from 1920. Our benchmarks were not completed, our district goals were not completed. We didn't do state standardized tests at all. So that presentation will include data about student achievement, but it's not going to be as thorough as I'd like it to be because of the nature of last year. But no matter what, a lot of the questions that you're asking, if you were to review the presentation from October 2019, that talks about some of the factors that, number one, contribute to the scores in general. Because the scores are the end result of something. So like what Mr. Jenkins just said, it's my belief, my firm belief, that these scores do not represent the effort being made by our teachers and other team members. You know, they don't. You know, if I talk to Mr. Ponti or Mrs. Noble or any of the teachers that are here tonight, or if I talk to any of the other team members we have, it doesn't represent the effort they're making for the children of Delanco.
Can I just interject? I recognize that the teachers are making great efforts, and that there are lots of challenges, transitions, and that these scores aren't a perfect reflection of reality. And yet, we have some of the very lowest scores in Burlington County. We're at the, like, almost at the very bottom. There are maybe one or two schools that are below us in Burlington County. I'm just asking for the plan. I, as a lot of our parents in this town, just wanted to...
I'm certainly not prepared to give you a plan tonight. But what I will, what I will say is that in November, I will be giving a presentation about scores. And that I have five other presentations that I've given that indicate factors as well as steps that have been taken. So I'll mention two things tonight, just for the benefit of everyone's hearing. Number one, we started an SEL initiative last year. That stands for Social and Emotional Learning. Now, that is not going to necessarily contribute to hard data where we say, "Well, because of the SEL program, now students are doing much better in math or ELA." That's not necessarily just from point A to point B how it would work. But the SEL will contribute to the overall quality of the school community and the interactions that are happening among students and teachers and everyone. That in turn will have an impact on everything, including instruction, including all the academic progress. That's number one. Number two, we did select, we went through a process to select and purchase a new math program that is based on the newest standards. And we knew that math was an area that we were struggling in, in many different levels. Again, not due to lack of effort from our teachers and everyone else that's working with our students. It's, there are many factors that contribute. But if we look at it, we did have a program that was outdated for a couple of years, and now we have one that is up to the newest standards. So that's all I can say tonight. But there will be a thorough presentation in November related to student achievement.
Mr. Jenkins, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, Vince.
Steve, I completely understand your concerns. To me, that is the number one problem that we are facing. As a community, as a school, as we saw test scores. And I think all of us here have a responsibility in that. People who are coming to town, there's a lot of new people coming in from, because of COVID and everything, you see that. Young couples coming in. When they talk to me, the first thing they're talking about is these low school scores. And it's having children in the school, and it's too late for my kids, I'm quite honest. But these scores are not acceptable. We could say, use any excuse, and I understand the circumstances, but, and I'm glad we have some plans in action, and we're going to move forward to a memorable look before we do hear that. But something has got to happen, because these years of low test scores are progressive. And when you multiply that with everything wrong with COVID, I mean, we're facing a disaster here, it really is. I'm very concerned about it, that's why I'm here. It's tough, and I know, nobody wants, you know, we can use every demographic and everything else going on, but something's got to get done, it's got to be a concerted effort. Every meeting, before we start each meeting, we should be talking about how to bring up these test scores. I think it's that important.
Oh, I definitely agree it's important. It's something that we've been, you know, working on for a long time. It's not something that is going to be done overnight. And the reason I say that...
And I understand, but it's the years of a slow trajectory of falling scores. And I understand this, the demographics involved in that, that's understandable. But at some point, that curve's got to kick. It's got to kick here. Because what else, what else, I mean, if you look at your trajectory, Steve, of where we're lined up, what we're talking about, and I've said this years ago, in our state schools, we're Delanco, we shouldn't be in that, in that kind of situation.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to comment. I think part of our problem is too, is, I don't want to try and annoy the community, but a lot of things that I see, I see on Facebook and other people talking is, there's a lot of community members that don't take the test seriously. And now, you know, I hear kids come in, and they tell me, my parents told me, "It doesn't matter, just get through the test." And I hear that more often than not anymore. I mean, I need to take the test, my mom department made it too. But especially now, this, you're not going to pass to the next grade, and all they tell you is that sometimes, like, you know, this is so serious, you might have to, you might stay up until sixth grade or whatever. So I think that had a lot of the problems, and the area that we live in, I think there's a different dynamic that's moving in. We have a lot more kids, young students that are coming in. They have to take the test two years of living here, and they still might not see much. They have a high population of special ed. That contributes to it. But I do think that, I'm not sure you know our community, but I think that lies in the head, that some of the parents just don't take it as seriously as they probably should. And kids are coming in, and they're just, you know, they're not coming in ever, it's like...
Oh, I tend to agree with you, and I know the teachers, and like I say, my children have gone through the school system, and I see the devotion of the teachers. I see, you know, how much they put forward and into it. And I'll go back quite a few years. Before we hired Mr. Mersinger, we were doing superintendent interviews. And one of these superintendent candidates came in, and he said, he went and looked at the data. And it was one thing that Joe did do. The data is very important. Your data of your students coming in, your data of how they're doing tests. And the one person said, "Oh, wrong with the math teacher, fire the teacher." Well, that's not the answer to the problem. Joe sat there and dug, he says, "I would sit there and be looking at what these children had before, where they came from. Did they eat lunch, did they eat breakfast?" There's a lot of factors involved. And one of the things we're doing, we're working on this very hard. I mean, like I say, Joe mentioned the new math program. That's something that's very important. We've got, Casey Noble was our, you know, curriculum coordinator, now she's the principal of the one school. We've got Lou back there. And the management team that we have in effect now is working very hard to bring up the scores and everything. The teachers are working, but just like they said, some of the parents aren't as concerned as we are as parents. We're concerned as parents, we have an active role with our children. Some parents aren't. We're trying our damnedest, I'll tell you that, you know? We continue to try everybody best.
Mr. Jenkins, if that's the case, and I can understand that too, what we're saying about parents. I see it too, I completely understand. That perhaps we need to rethink how we're doing, and educate parents and things like that. Maybe even a committee on this to get these scores up. I, we need to do something different, though. I just, it just keeps going down. And without having goals, goals that are, that are, with a trajectory, that are concrete, that we can attain, I'd love to hear that. Where we're going, we're going up 10%, that's our goal. Or to something to that extent. Like, eventually, it's got to hit, and everything being on with COVID and everything, I really, I don't see us being able to do that unless we do something that's kind of, that's drastic, that changes the dynamic here. That's just totally, you know, as a parent.
I understand this, yeah.
That's how it is, we have kids here, and it's hard, you have kids here, and you're looking at these scores, and you're seeing what's going on, and you're paying taxes, and it's tough. And it's tough for the people, the parents at home who are doing the virtual learning too. Because I know from my wife and myself, it's hard on the parents right now with everything going on. So, like, with everything taken into account, you know, we could, you know, being from a military background, anything can be blamed. You could come up, Michael says, you could come up with any kind of excuse for things, or you can make it happen, and have holes, and end up paying those holes. That's where I think we need to head to. Otherwise, we're just going to keep going down, and the things are going to get worse. And all these new folks that are coming in, and they're excited to be here, they're excited about the schools, and I love the passion, I love that we have parents running for school board this year, I love that we have a real election, and if we can make decisions that we're going to have more parents on the board. And that's, and I hope it goes that way. But we definitely have to change something, because going the same way and continuing this path, we're not going to make a difference.
Well, just so I can, so, Mr. Calliwire, I know that you mentioned goals. I just want everyone to be aware that we do have district goals every year. So last year's goals, the 1920 goals, really had to be put on hold because we weren't able to complete. But if we do look back at the 1819 goals, and I want to share this tonight, because I am proud of this, I'm proud of our students, I'm proud of our teachers. If we look at the goals, we had a goal of, let's see here. Just bringing it up on my computer. So our district goal for reading for the 2018-2019 school year was 65% of students showing proficiency in that area. And then when we worked all the data through three times a year, we collected it, analyzed it, 67% were proficient at the end of the year. You know, we were proud of that, we achieved that goal. Now, no, that's not 100, no, it's not 90, but it's 67%, which does not match what we're seeing on the tests. So that's, that's why I say the efforts of our teachers and our students and everyone. That's what's being shown in our district goals. But then when we look at the test, the state standardized test, we're seeing different numbers. And then when we look at writing, you know, our writing goal was that, I think we missed by one point. So our goal was 65%, and we had 64%. And I still would call that satisfactory progress, because it's still an increase from the previous year. You know, so we, you know, we looked at that and said, well, yeah, I mean, that's actually still pretty good, considering when we look at the previous year. And this is, I'm going to share more in November, of course. But if we look at the previous year, it was only at 55%. So we got to 64. You know, so these goals did matter, and in 1819, we were showing tremendous improvement. But then when it comes to math, we were noticing some, you know, pretty serious issues in that area. Because our goal for math was 80%, and our achievement at that point was only about 62%. So we knew that the math scores and the goals that we had set for math were very concerning. And we worked with the math teachers, we worked with all the teachers that teach math, and had them involved in the selection process. So again, I can't give a full presentation tonight. But I am proud of what we've achieved each year, depending on the district goals. And sometimes we meet the mark, and sometimes we don't. But it is different from what you see the state, the state's percentages for us. And that's an issue that I have to look at and say, why is there that big discrepancy? So either way, I appreciate the comments.
Just one more brief comment to tagline.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, okay. See you again, see you.
Mr. Mersinger just threw a lot of numbers at us. But I want to, and so there's a lot of subtlety, and I don't want to, you know, make it sound like this is a cut and dried issue. But I think that the statistics on the performance in this school, in these two schools, in this school district, are pretty dramatic. And for anyone who's watching the stream or in this room, I just want to throw it out there, you can Google NJ School Performance Report. Just Google NJ School Performance Report, and there are really detailed statistics. You can compare to Delanco, to Federally, to Delran, the surrounding towns. And so this will be a conversation that I'll continue to send to the future. Thank you for...
That's not a problem, okay. I believe you put your hand up in the back.
I just wanted to remind Joe, our algebra program, how, what that did, you know?
So we've had years where, okay, so...
I know, I know what you're saying, but...
Thank you, Mrs. Harper. So this year for algebra, I know that people are disappointed, and we didn't have students eligible, and there were a number of issues. But if we look at previous years for algebra, there was one year, and I would have to look at the data, but I don't have it in front of me. But I believe we had 10 students in the algebra program at that time. And there was some concern at the time of, you know, how are these students going to do? And what are the end results going to be? And I believe, you know, I'd have to bring up the data. But yeah, you're right, Mrs. Harper, we were very proud of that, that every single student passed the test. You know, and that is the most challenging test that the state has to offer. And I have to find the data for that, but that was definitely a moment of pride. That might have been from 1718. Um, let's, oh yeah, there we go, okay. So what it was is, the 1718 school year. And again, this is not, if not 1920 or 2021 data, of course, but algebra, we had seven students that were tested. 100% of them passed the test, so, and the state average for that was 40%. So we actually blew the state average out of the water in that area. But that wasn't true for every grade and every subject, but that's what we did in algebra, so thank you, Mrs. Harper. But either way, the data is available on our website, and I will be presenting more in November.
And Mr. Harper was saying, that is a great accomplishment, but we didn't build on that. We didn't, you know, now we know algebra. You know, that's sort of saying we had success, and then it was, and then we're not fully on. Now it's, now we're starting over again.
I was just going to make a comment. Yeah, Steve, I definitely agree with you, with those metrics. You can look at them, you know, and that data is important. I want to just, you know, go back to my comment at the last meeting, and I'll agree with the teacher that you spoke to and the public, that it's going to be a conversation that we have to have as a community. It's going to be a partnership between the board, the teachers, and all of the members of the community, the parents, most importantly. And whatever initiative we do, we're going to have the parents buy into that initiative. We're also going to need the teachers to support and buy into that initiative. And Vince, I love your suggestion of, you know, we had a reopening committee, and my opinion, I think that it worked very well. You know, and that's something for the future board to consider, is maybe develop a plan for new initiatives. Because I agree, and I would say that, I want to give this board a little bit of credit, because I'm just evaluating it from 2015 to now. The conversations that we've had in executive, I know I can't share a lot of that information, but also, you know, conversations we've had in regards to looking at the cohort data, and looking at the, you know, the park exam, which wasn't perfect, but it was data that we could look at, and evaluating the cohorts, and we were starting to make some bold moves. And it was our hope that those moves would continue, and the planning would continue through 2020. I don't think anybody could have predicted COVID would be, I'm not using that as exactly an excuse, but I know that the board had to kind of give our administration a lot of this way to work with the teachers and focus on developing a curriculum for this coming year that, you know, as Mrs. Harper stated, she's never had to encounter, you know, this hybrid stay-at-home, which, you know, I give a lot of credit to the administration and to the teachers. I was really happy with the real plan, you know, with the hybrid that that developed. I understand why we went to lockdown to remember, I supported that. And I think that we're starting to see that that might have been the right call for what we do with the COVID numbers that are coming out. But I just want to say that, you know, we have been looking at that data for several years, and things are not going to move as quickly as you want. I'm at the hard line. But I do feel that there, what has been tremendous improvement made by this board, and I'm sure that the future board will continue to make improvements. But also, to Vince's point and to the teacher, I know your name, I just don't know if you want me to say it. Miss Mayner, you know, Miss Mayner's point, it's going to take a conversation as a community, because, you know, we can come up with the greatest plan, but these are the players that are going to have to execute it, and we're going to need support from the parents.
So true.
So I just want to make that comment that, you know, don't lose the faith, you know, in Steve, you know, I'm...
All right, thanks. Yeah, it's all...
I just wanted, you know, it's important to make, and this is something that's been on this for a chief for a couple of... You need to have preference, dish or wide, like, you know, like, elementary students using one math program, middle school students using a different math program. Some teachers are doing one, and other teachers are doing another. And I think as it comes to that, we're all now on the final, obviously, make preference from K all the way to A grade. So I think your home starts to see this change, because it's going to be back on the ground. That COVID happening is not going to be, so yes, but I mean, I think that's great to know that we're all finally doing something that's dish or wide, instead of this grade's doing this, this grade's doing this, this grade's doing this, we're all doing the same thing, so... That, that could probably be part of your plan, I'm sure you discussed that this one, you know, that especially now, math is this year, the first time since a long time, that we're always in the same... the same, same for ELA year of growth.
We're getting there, it's not overnight, and we're getting there.
I have one more thing, I just want to brag on our math teachers a little bit more. We had an algebra class in 1819 as well, five students, all of them passed the test as well. So again, that's the hardest, that's the most challenging assessment the state has to offer, and we had our top performing students just pass it, there were no issues, there were, there were no students that were in level one, two, or three, they were either in level four or five, which is the highest. So, I mean, I just, I'm really proud of some accomplishments that we have, but at the same time, I'm not proud of other things that we haven't been able to address yet, but the yet is important, and I think that the teachers and everyone in the community who have, you know, if you have children in the school or not, that yet is important. You know, I have kids myself, and if my child cannot read today, it's because he cannot read yet, it doesn't mean that it will never happen, and it's the same thing for the achievement of our students, so, that's all, I think that's, I think I'm finished saying things about that topic. Thank you.
All right, any more comments from the public? All right, now I'll read some of the comments from somebody, Danielle Foley.
Danielle?
Danielle Foley, yes. Thank you for streaming, I always like the good stuff, too. Thank you for streaming the board meeting. My husband and I truly value our children's education and respect all that the board is doing. We believe staying informed and attending the board meetings is important. This option helps ensure that we are able to attend and view the meeting. Also, thank you to all the incredible Delanco staff for all that you are doing for the children, especially during this difficult time. A humongous thank you to Mr. Mercer and Mr. Conti for always answering all, and I do mean all of my questions. Nothing beats a dragon, not even COVID. Thank you, Danielle Foley. I love that something like that. All right, and then one other thing from Catherine Block. Thank you to all of the teachers and staff for doing an amazing job with a fully virtual, I hate this password, I'm sorry. Where was I? Amazing job with a fully virtual platform this year. Both of my children have been very happy with the format, the format for the day that their teachers have provided with assignments and teacher-student interaction via Zoom. As a parent, the Google Classroom setup and daily schedule has allowed the day to go smoothly for both of my children and myself with assisting them. These tools are also teaching them to be more independent and responsible in the classwork and times they need to be available. Thank you to the teachers and staff for continuing to take education to the next level. I like the best stuff, this is important. All right, then.
We have comments from Catherine Kursakchili, which were written, and then Mr. Block, you had a comment that you state, you restated, so, I mean, we could, we could read the comment as well, so, if you, there's the comment that Mr. Block did.
Do you wish to read that again, or do you wish to?
It's pretty brief, why don't you read it?
Okay, you'll make me read everything, aren't you, thank you, buddy. The September 2020 Board of Education meeting was livestreamed on YouTube, and the archived video stayed online after the meeting. However, the YouTube account was switched to private after less than a month making the video unavailable. As a Delanco resident, taxpayers, I think the video from all Board of Education meetings should be permanently archived online, available to the public. I'm asking the board to take quick action on this issue and that this meeting video also will remain available. Well, we already discussed that, so we did good there. All right. That closes out public comment on agenda items. Is there any in this, any reason for any of us to go to executive session?
Just may, it just came out, I think today or yesterday, about winter sports being allowed, and I know, I don't feel honored, but having, you know, kids who like to play basketball thing, you know, you could, to Mr. Mercer, any thought on it, or do you think you may follow with some of the other school districts are going to do with that, or?
So the thought on that right now is that middle schools are still, it's typically high schools that are starting up, and that a lot of middle schools are still saying that they're not going to be being able to, but I do stay in touch with my middle school colleagues to find out what they're doing, but the latest reports that I've heard from my colleagues is that many middle schools are still not starting up. That could change in a week, you know, but that's, that's the report I have.
Vince, I can tell you, just being still on the mailing list for a lot of that stuff, remember when the NJSI government high school sports update had nothing to do with middle school, although middle school, a lot of times, it's just not this small Canadian district, obviously, we filed some of those guidelines, but the survey that just went out that I actually do have access to, probably about 70% of the teams so far within the league that Delanco is a member in, have said that they currently do not plan to do winter sports, so, and like Joe said, that could change the drop of the dime with different guidance with everything like that. I can tell you, in those high school events, there's no spectators that are allowed, they're limited to teams, you can't have more than that amount of people in there, like, there's a lot of little nuances that were within that, you know. I guess, Joe, I have to look at what teams are in there, right?
And I know, yeah, that's, I know that's a problem, and maybe the possibility of DISA, but, and I just want, for next month, an approach like maybe some orthodox way, you have to understand with kids, and I know with some of the teachers that are doing like, their exercise at home, the kids are getting out of shape right now, and part of being in shape is your mental well-being, you know, how you do at school, I think that affects it, so it just, I wish we had more options for the kids of what we have now. I know everything that's going on, and you could get, you know, it could be more coming with COVID and everything, but I guess I'd like to keep it open mind about it, maybe different approaches we can use, maybe give the kids more.
As you discuss the next re-upping plan, discuss some interferal type things that can happen.
Good point, very good idea, Eric.
Hi, Mr. Mossup's the expert on athletics, he's done it for many years, but what you said about it is correct, of course, is the 30% that said yes, some of them are saying, well, maybe not, because we don't have enough ponies, you know, so it's just the, we still aren't, are unsure.
Thank you.
All right, great, all right, anybody got anything else? All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all, thank you very much.